We're ready to go. Welcome to the Bible study. And we are this week in chapter 11 of the book of Matthew. Having concluded chapter 10 last week, let's begin with a word of prayer. The Lord be with you.
The Lord be with you.
Let us pray, Heavenly Father, as you have sent out the disciples in last week's chapter, to heal the sick, to drive out demons, and to preach the good news in your name. Help us now determine from further activities that way in which you wish us to proclaim your name in our time and place. These things we pray in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen. All right. From last time, chapter 10, Jesus has sent out the 12 disciples with some instructions. And he tells them to go nowhere among the Samaritans or the Gentiles. It's strictly a ministry to Jews. And he gives them power to drive out demons and to heal and to raise the dead. In other words, he's giving them the power to do what he did. And this is a ministry to Jews only. They are told to rely solely on the providence of God. In other words, don't take a bag for your journey, no money for your belts, no staff. They're totally transient and reliant on God's providence. He tells them if they go to a place and they will not accept the message, get out of there to the extent to even dust off your feet. Shake the dust off your feet and to run if you get in trouble. If they're coming after you in one town, flee to the next. We noted that among his disciples, the list of disciples that's in chapter 10, Judas and Simon are zealots. Simon is maybe a zealot, a part of a kind of a political group that existed in Galilee at the time. And Judas may have been a sicarii, a knife wielder. So these are men who would have known revolution and violent revolution at that. So these are not just a bunch of innocent people who are necessarily peace-loving. They may be, but this indicates that they knew the way of the world and they were part of the groups that were around at the time. Tells them to be wise as serpents and gentle as doves. That means you want to have some savvy about what you're doing. Don't be naive. Stick and move. In other words, preach the message. And they will accuse the disciples of the same thing that they accused Jesus of, and that is working for the devil as they cast out demons. So whatever they've been throwing at Jesus, the disciples can expect them to be hurled at them as well. He says, "Don't fear what can cure, kill the body, but what can heal the soul." In other words, that's a way of saying you may actually die for the ministry. That may be the price that you have to pay. He tells them that they are valuable. If God loves the sparrows and values them, he will love you as well. And he concludes by demanding absolute loyalty. He says it's greater than your father and mother. Absolute and exclusive loyalty to the mission and ministry that he sent them out to without compromise. They are preaching then to people who are already waiting for the kingdom of God. To an audience that's already waiting to hear the good news that the kingdom is coming and who, as we said last week, may have seen others come through offering something similar. So what he's selling them is not the kingdom of God. They already believe in it. What he's selling them is that he is the one who brings it about. Is that Jesus of Nazareth is the one who brings it about, and now is the time that it's coming. And he concludes with a message of grace and a blessing to anyone who helps the ministry, anyone who even gives a cup of cold water to one of these little ones. In other words, anybody who helps the ministry at all finds favor in God's eyes. In other words, will not lose their reward. So there is this emphasis in chapter 10 on total and exclusive loyalty to Jesus Christ and his way of proclaiming the kingdom of God and the kingdom of God as he proclaims it. And we'll see there in chapter 11, a different way of proclaiming the kingdom of God that Jesus says is over now. And we'll find that out as we go forward. So, chapter 11, verse 1. When Jesus had finished instructing his 12 disciples, he went on from there to teach and proclaim his message in the cities. All right, let's just stop right there for a second. That means that Jesus is not with the disciples now. So as we enter chapter 11, Jesus is in one location. The disciples are in other locations, doing their things without him. All right, so they're doing without him. Verse 2 of chapter 11. When John, that's John the Baptist, heard in prison what the Messiah was doing, he sent word by his disciples and said to him, "Are you the one who is to come, or are we to wait for another?" And Jesus answered them, "Go and tell John what you hear and what you see. The blind receive their sight; the lame walk; the lepers are cleansed; the deaf hear; the dead are raised; and the poor have good news brought to them. And blessed is anyone who takes no offense at me." All right. That's John the Baptist, who apparently still has disciples of his own, who are not Jesus' So whatever disciples that Jesus gained from John, he did not apparently gain all of them. John still has disciples. Should we wait for another? Are you the one? Well, why would John say that?
If Jesus wasn't being belligerent enough or wasn't using enough force.
John's in a bad way himself, so.
Yeah?
Perhaps he had a mistaken notion, as the disciples seem to have, that he was going to be the conqueror, take over militarily.
Right.
Well, John the Baptist said, "I have two with water, and one that comes after me will not be. I can hold his sandals."
Right.
And then here he's saying, "Go find out, is this the one that I was talking about and returning me with that information? Yes, I am, or no, I'm not?" And Jesus answered this question, yes.
This indicates that Jesus is not delivering what John was expecting. Otherwise, he wouldn't ask the question. And it highlights the difference in their ministry. Jesus answers by describing his ministry. He doesn't say yes or no. He describes his ministry. He says, "Tell them what you see; the blind receive their sight; the lame walk; the lepers are cleansed; the deaf hear; the dead are raised; and the poor have good news brought to them." None of this happened with John. John didn't heal anybody. He didn't drive out any demons. And he didn't speak specifically to the poor, the way Jesus does. His was a general message of judgment. They went out to John, Jesus goes out to them. It's a totally different way of doing ministry. And John had nothing but warning and judgment. Already the axe is laid at the root of the tree, you know? So his ministry is different. His way of proclaiming the kingdom is different. In the eyes of John, the judgment is coming down. When he says the kingdom of God is at hand, he means the judgment is coming now. When Jesus says the kingdom of God is coming at hand, he's talking about something a little different that changes the way people behave toward each other. For John, there's no more time for that nonsense. Too much.
Pastor, read your verse 6, would you please?
Verse 6, sure. "And blessed is anyone who takes no offense at me."
No offense. This version says, "How happier are those who have no doubts about me?"
Yeah. That's a little bit of a loose translation, but... What does that mean? Blessed is anyone who takes no offense at me? Well, who is the one who has just taken offense at Jesus?
John.
John, right? So what is he telling him?
Get on the boat.
Stay in your own lane, bro.
Yeah.
Yeah. You did it your way, I'm doing it this way. You're good if you just let me be what I am. And this is going to sound cruel, but in a way, he's telling John that his time is And Jesus' time is now.
I think John, you said that he, Jesus, must become greater, I must become...
Yes, yes.
But maybe he thought that he had a bigger role in Jesus' ministry.
I think maybe he thought that Jesus would do the same kind of ministry that he did. And he's not. And, okay, I've been doing it this way for a long time now, and I've said this guy's greater. He may have meant greater in the sense that he thought he was going to do more of the same thing. And he's just not doing what Jesus did. And John's sitting in prison saying, "Well, it's not happening the way I thought it was going to happen." And Jesus is telling John, "It's not going to happen the way you thought it was going to happen." But, you know, don't be offended by that. It's just different.
Well, when Jesus says, "The lame walk; the deaf hear; the lepers are cleansed," doesn't that come from Isaiah's prophecy, the Messiah?
Yes.
Maybe he was trying to point John in that direction, some kind of fulfilling the prophecy. Do you remember that?
That's a good point.
This next group of verses kind of changes the focus. At one point, he says, "I will tell you, there is no greater man whoever lived than John."
But.
Well.
There's a but.
Yeah.
There's a big old but on there. All right, well, let's take a look at John's big but here, shall we? And blessed is the one who takes no offense at what I just said. All right, so he's got that. He's basically saying, "Okay, you did it that way, I'm doing it this way. Don't take offense at it. It'll be cool." Verse 7, "As they went away, Jesus began to speak to the crowds about John. What did you go out to the wilderness to look at? A reed shaken by the wind? What then did you go out to see? Someone dressed in soft robes? Look, those who wear soft robes are in royal palaces. What then did you go out to see? A prophet? Yes, I tell you, and more than a prophet. This is the one about whom it is written. See, I am sending my messenger ahead of you, who will prepare your way before you. Truly, I tell you, among those born of women, no one has arisen greater than John the Baptist. Yet, the least in the kingdom of heaven is greater than he." And let's just stop right there. All right? So Jesus has taken that term, the kingdom of heaven, a term that John has used, and he used it to describe something that is not John. A reed shaken by the wind. What is that a metaphor of? Someone who is infirm, okay? Someone who's dressed in soft robes. John was a hard guy. He was an ascetic. He lived in the wilderness. He says that's what John was. He's a great prophet. And prophets oftentimes proclaim doom and gloom, which is why so many of them were killed. But, or as the scriptures say, "And yet..." Now, what's your translation there?
It's a little softer than yours. For John is the one who the scripture says, "God said, 'I will send my messenger up the way.' I assure you that John the Baptist is greater than any man who ever lived. But he who is least in the kingdom of heaven is greater than John."
Okay. In that last part, we have it almost exactly identical, actually. So he is taking that phrase, he's co-opting that phrase, the kingdom of God, and he's saying the legitimate expression of that is in my ministry. John was working to proclaim the guy who was going to proclaim the kingdom. And by extension, saying, "Well, John didn't really understand the kingdom." Which might have been mildly insulting to John's disciples. All right? And then he goes on to describe the way in which that was done. Verse 12, "From the days of John the Baptist until now, the kingdom of heaven has suffered violence, and the violent take it by force. For all the prophets in law prophesied until John came. And if you are willing to accept it, he is Elijah who is to come. Let anyone with ears listen. The law prophesied until John." John is the prophet under the law. Jesus is bringing something completely different. The violent take it by force. What does that mean? That's a hard one to figure out, actually.
Maybe this is about false prophecy.
Well, I don't know if it's about false prophecy. It may be about a different kind of prophetic action that's required now than what John thought was appropriate for his time and place. He's definitely changing it up. And it's different. So he says, basically saying, "In John's time, it was necessary to proclaim the message in that way. In my time, this is the way it's going to be proclaimed." So he is usurping John in a way, but trying not to insult him too badly, you know? But he's saying, "You're the old guard, I'm the new guard. With the old, in with the new." Kind of a rough message, again, for John's disciples to hear, but, I mean, you know, all of us, none of us like to hear that what we do is out of style. That's hard for anybody to take. Your way of doing church is not going to work now. What? I've been doing this since I was a child. We all have fondness for our own traditions and the way we do things, and sometimes we're reluctant to let them go, and we think that everyone else should feel the same way. They don't. And they're not required to. So, yeah. Let anyone with ears listen. In other words, he's kind of trying to preach to the choir. If you can hear me, then listen to what I'm saying. There are some who can't hear him. Why can't they hear him? Right. It's almost like you have to already be part of the group in order to hear the proclamation of the group. Those who want to hang on to what they got may be unable to receive the message about something new. And that's just as true today as it ever has been.
It's kind of like somebody's trying to tell you something, but I don't want to hear that.
I don't want to hear it. And even speaks to their ability to hear. Those who let anyone with ears listen means they don't have ears. In other words, they can't hear. Our ability to hear is affected by what we value sometimes. Yeah.
Well, I believe the Holy Spirit is a part of that, too. Years ago, many years ago, if I care to remember, I thought, if I'm a good Christian, I should read the Bible, the whole Bible, from beginning to end, thinking, okay, I've done that, check that off. So obviously, I was going into the Bible with a bad motive, basically. And frankly, I never got out of it. But then...
Yes, worse than numbers.
Yes, yes. But later, I met a woman, Lois, Kurt Wright, remember Lois? And she loved the Bible and started telling me why it was important and, you know, just... She was a mentor to me in that respect. And so then I went to read the Bible with the idea that, okay, this isn't just some ancient writing that good Christians read. This is important. This is God's word to us directly. And when I went in with that goal, to know God, I believe that's when the Holy Spirit helped me make sense of what I was reading.
You've got ears, all of a sudden.
To move oneself and one's self-interests out of the way, it's difficult for anybody, for all of us, you know? It really is. Our ability to hear is sometimes affected by the situation we're in and what benefits us at the time. Because we can tend to put up walls against those things that threaten what we have. There is that aspect of the gospel that is always tearing things down, isn't there? It's always tearing down what you treasure, what you... For these people, the whole sacrificial system, the law, everything is getting torn down. Everybody who's in charge is not going to be in charge anymore. Their ability to have people follow them will be destroyed. And they want to protect that. It's natural.
The gospel tears down man-made things.
Yes, and those are man-made things. Yeah. It's like I said this past Sunday in the sermon, we think that we're going to erect a system that's going to rain down justice like living waters, and it reminded me of the Tower of Babel, right? Your language gets confused and we can't even hear each other anymore. And that's the situation we're in right now. We can't even hear each other anymore. You know, it's just... So in order to learn, you first have to admit that you do not know before you can receive instruction.
And maybe what I think I know is incorrect.
Right. While at the same time, you can't be shaken like a reed in the wind. Means you're going to flop over for every new thing that comes down the pike. So there's a kind of a balance to be struck. Yeah, it's tough. There are people who will gain because of the way Jesus proclaims the kingdom, and there are people who will lose because of the way Jesus proclaims the kingdom. And part of his proclamation is you have to be willing to lose everything. All right. And this next part is really interesting. Verse 16, "But to what will I compare this generation? It's like children sitting in the marketplaces and calling to one another. We played the flute for you, and you did not dance. We wailed, and you did not mourn. For John came neither eating nor drinking, and they say, 'He has a demon.' The son of man came eating and drinking, and they say, 'Look, a glutton and a drunkard, a friend of tax collectors and sinners. Yet wisdom is vindicated by her deeds.'" Let's unpack that one a little bit. What's being said here? "We played the flute for you, and you didn't dance. And we wailed, and you did not mourn." Jesus is the flute player. He's the party animal who eats and drinks with people. He's not an ascetic by any means. Okay, they didn't listen to him. John was an ascetic. He neither ate nor drank. They didn't listen to him either. So what's he saying?
You're guarded if you do, and you're guarded if you don't.
Exactly. You folks aren't going to listen to anybody, no matter how the message is delivered. We played, we did it every way possible. You got John, his dour prophecy of judgment. You got me with the good news and the healings and everything, and you're not listening to any of it. In other words, no matter how we try to deliver the message, you're just not going to listen.
Looking at that, what you just read in totality, I look at what you just said, you know, don't you, don't you, but I also throw in there, that you're going to complain about it. You gotta listen, because you're going to complain.
That's right, that's right. Yeah, that's true. Yeah. "Yet wisdom is vindicated by your children." Who are the children of wisdom?
Children of God? Well, Christians.
Believers.
I like to look at it this way, and this may not be the correct way of looking at it, but since I'm saying it, it sure must be right.
I vote for that.
Thank you, Vic. Blessed is the one who takes no offense. You have nothing to gain from this, Vic. Absolutely nothing at all. I have no power whatsoever.
But we fooled both of them, didn't we?
You're sucking up to the wrong guy, is what you're doing. The children of wisdom are actions.
Are what?
Actions, what you do.
Oh, yes.
Wisdom is vindicated by our children. What you do will prove the wisdom of what you think.
Well, this translation has deeds.
Oh, there you go. Obviously, a brilliant translation.
This one says, "shown it true by its results."
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Different synonym.
Yep, yep.
This brings to mind another passage, and maybe they're not connected, but it's in one of the gospels where Jesus said, says, "In that day, you will say, 'Lord, Lord, we did this for you, we did that for you.'" And Jesus ends up saying, "Away from me, I never knew you."
I never knew you, yeah.
You had wrong motives. So is that kind of connected in here?
I think so. I think it's the difference between what is said to be believed and what you actually do about it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Not everyone who says to me, "Lord, Lord, we'll enter the kingdom of heaven," but those who do the will of my Father. Not everyone who says to me, Lord, Lord, will enter the kingdom of heaven, but those who do the will of my Father. And I like that translation. What did you say, results?
Yeah, God's wisdom, however, is shown to be true by its results.
Results, yeah. I like that. And we can all theorize. We can all preach. But doing is doing is difficult. All right. Verse twenty, "Then he began to reproach the cities in which most of his deeds of power had been done, because they did not repent. Woe to you, Coruzen, woe to you, Bethsaida; for if the deeds of power done in you had been done in Tyre and Sidon, they would have repented long ago in sackcloth and ashes. But I tell you on the day of judgment, it will be more tolerable for Tyre and Sidon than for you. And you, Capernaum, will you be exalted to heaven? No, you will be brought down to Hades, even if the deeds of power done in you had been done in Sodom. It would have remained until this day. But I tell you that on the day of judgment, it will be more tolerable for the land of Sodom than for you." That's not nice. So what is he saying?
You heard and you ignored it and it's going to rain.
Yeah.
What's the significance of Tyre and Sidon? What about those two towns?
There are two cities in which he preached and did miracles, and that, as he describes it, did not sufficiently listen. Compares him to Sodom, which is, you know, Sodom. So he's basically said, look, I did everything I could. So you either get the kingdom or the judgment.
But if the miracles had been performed, and you had been performed in Tyre and Sidon, the people there would have long ago-
Oh, okay, okay. So then he did not-
The cities that haven't been made aware of him yet.
Right. Yeah, I think you're right. Yeah, so I haven't, if they had seen the show that you saw, that you saw, they would have repented, but you didn't.
But is there something about those two cities that they were extremely wicked, or-
Tyre and Sidon are both on the coasts in the Mediterranean. I don't think Jesus went there to preach.
Well, apparently not.
Nothing except that he hadn't been there, nothing particularly onerous about the two cities?
No, just places he hadn't been. So he's saying, but if I had been there, they probably would have accepted it.
That's not the case with Sodom. Clearly, Sodom's just a bad place.
Bad place, bad place. Yeah. Said if they would have been given the opportunity, they would have grabbed it. You were given the opportunity and refused it, you know. Yeah. All right. Okay, so there's a judgment against those who have been given the opportunity and have not accepted it. All right, verse twenty-five, "At that time Jesus said, I thank you, Father, Lord of heaven and earth, because you have hidden these things from the wise and intelligent, and have revealed them to infants. Yes, Father, for such was your gracious will. All things have been handed over to me by my Father. No one knows the Son except the Father. No one knows the Father except the Son, and anyone to whom the Son chooses to reveal to him." Right there, let's just stop right there. All right. So as he goes from place to place and town to town, let's just ask ourselves a question. Who is likely to receive his message?
Apparently, the unlearned, the ones that are open to-
Those who are oppressed by the current-
Yes.
Vision of power and wealth.
Yeah, yeah. Those who need it, the ones for whom it is actually good news.
Who's a few excited?
Yeah. And who is unlikely to receive it?
People who feel what?
Those for whom it will cost.
Would you like to say those who feel that Jesus is messing with payday?
Messing with payday, yeah. Yeah. So, you know, it's the infants, and they were just, just a metaphor, and they're they're not supposed to be people who are wise, but in the eyes of the kingdom, they are because they can receive the message. Yep. And it's interesting because as he instructs their disciples to be prepared to lose everything, the message is really aimed at people who don't have a lot to lose. So one of the ways to keep ourselves prepared for the kingdom of God is to have less to lose. All right, here's the final part of this chapter. Verse twenty-eight, "Come to me, all you that are weary and carrying heavy burdens, and I will give you rest. Take my yoke upon you and learn from me; for I am gentle and humble in heart, and you will find rest for your souls; for my yoke is easy, and my burden is light." Weary and heavily laden. That's the description of a pack animal who's carrying a load, right? "I will give you rest." So it implies that the people who he's inviting are people who need rest from carrying a heavy burden. What's the burden they're carrying?
The law?
The law.
I don't think they were carrying burdens of both Rome and the religious leaders of the day.
Right, right. Right.
Is it anything that could possibly be loved?
Right. Exactly. And the yoke, you know, it's something that you put on oxen, and it, what does it do? What's the purpose of a yoke?
It helps the oxen to share the world.
Well, it does more than that. It keeps them going in the right direction. It restricts their movement severely. My yoke is easy. My yoke doesn't do that. So they're under the stricture of the law, which has them locked into a certain way of living and comparing every one of their actions to that particular standard, which, as Dory said, is impossible to meet. That's a heavy burden. And he says, that's gone.
Not ahead of the lighter road?
Yes, my yoke is easy and my burden is light in comparison to the one you're carrying now.
Kind of a contrast in tone between those last few verses there and the verses thirty-eight and thirty-nine in chapter ten. It isn't talking about an easy yoke there at all.
What is he talking about?
He who does not take my, takes, who does not take his cross and follow me is not worthy of me. He who finds his life will lose it, and he loses his life for my sake to find it.
Yep.
Talking about taking up the cross there.
Yep.
And here, they're talking about the yoke being lifted, so.
The yoke of the law being lifted, and the price? What's the price?
Of not taking the yoke?
The price of being able to take on the yoke of Jesus, which frees you from the law. What's the price for that? Everything. It's a darned if you do, darned if you don't situation again, isn't it? No, it's, 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 those who have nothing to lose will not fear losing anything. But you got to get yourself to the position where you have nothing left to lose. That's not easy. It's not easy. I can sympathize with those who have a hard time hearing the message. I have a hard time hearing the message. You got to give up everything in order to be released from everything, in order to be free. I mean, it's easy to think you're free until somebody wants to take what you have. And then you find that you're a servant of what you have. You're kind of a slave if you, if you will.
Then if you've ever had a big problem, and then it's over with, and you feel free, like, well, that's a little bit of fun.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah. Like the like the animal whose yoke is taken off and whose burden is gone, and he can wander around doing what he wants. But there's a price. And that is the baggage that you choose to carry, you have to give that up as well.
In order to really be free.
In order to really be free.
I just kind of had an analogy going in my head about somebody who had amassed, collected all kinds of neat possessions and things like that, and kept them in his house. And then in order to keep people from skewing them, and he keeps fortifying the house. You can't leave because you can't leave these stuff unattended. And you have to keep, keep up with the burden of, oh, I got some more stuff I got to protect it to. And all of a sudden, you're just a slave to all that stuff.
Yes. Or, or any of us.
Yeah.
Or any of us to a certain extent.
Like the story about the guy with a bumper crops, and he builds all the extra barns, and says, I'm fixed for life.
Yep.
And Jesus says, you fool.
You fool.
It's going to be called for you tonight.
Yep, yep. We're all that person to an extent, you know. There is an exemption here for guitars. I'm sure of it. It's in the-
I thought it was for boulders, but maybe it's-
It's, it's-
It's in Hezekiah, I heard.
It's in Hezekiah.
Do you take up the violin and stand?
It's take up the violin and, and follow, take up the Stratocaster and follow me, is what he said, yeah. But we all have the things that we like, don't we? And it's why we're able to come to you on YouTube.
If you get that carried away, then that's a form of worshiping your stuff, you know.
Well, yeah, but we all, to some extent, worship our stuff. George Carlin had a great bit on stuff, if you ever Google it.
Yeah, yeah.
Get a great bit on having stuff. The economy runs on having stuff.
Yeah, nobody wanted anything, wasn't giving it.
I mean, just think about it, if we all lived, if we all lived in a manner where we, we just had what we actually required to survive, this whole system would come crashing down, right?
That can be hard to keep in perspective. I mean, we're talking, basically, survival or-
Like guitars, yeah.
Right.
Like you say, certain tyrants are exempt.
Cubs memorabilia, there's exemptions, you know. People collect all sorts of stuff. There's, you know, some people collect quite unusual. Some people collect bottle cabs and
Were you ever in Colleen's house before she moved?
Licensed place, no.
Oh. She had collections of collections. Were you ever in there?
No.
I mean, it was like a museum. You could walk in there all day long and not see all the stuff she had. You know, and it meant something to her, and she liked it, you know. I can't imagine how she got rid of all that.
But you have to make, you know, many people have had to make that life transition from being in a house that they've lived in for thirty-four years.
Levon did.
Levon, everybody does, and then you have to let things go. And, and I don't, it maybe brings some kind of sadness at having to let things go because they are part of your life and they remind you of your life. But in some sense, it might be a little bit of freedom to where you don't have to worry about them anymore.
You don't have to dust them.
That's right.
You don't have to dust them, yeah.
That's why I'm getting rid of some of my, I'm just, I said, just recite it down.
I hope you don't, I don't, I hope you don't feel that way about your husband.
Almost, not quite.
If you get rid of him, you won't have to dust him anymore. So keep moving, Vic, keep moving.
When I'm down, he does it.
Oh, there you go. But yeah, it's
I have about eight hundred beer cans, and now you can't give them away.
Oh, okay.
Rage, you know, the seventies and eighties.
Right, right.
Pat's still got Beanie Babies?
Beanie Babies?
Last guy on the
Yeah, Pat's got-
On the chain letter. The last guy on the chain letter. Boy, I'm gonna, I got all these, I'm gonna be, wow, I'll be loaded when we mean the market crash. Put by eight hundred, what do I do with them now?
That's also called the biggest fool. The biggest fool principle.
There you go.
If you buy a Ferrari and can turn around and sell it at a profit, then you're not the biggest fool. But at some point, the guy buys it for which there is no market.
That's right.
He's the biggest fool.
Nothing is more valuable.
I always thought collectibles were kind of interesting things, you know, and that stuff. To me, the downfall of collectibles is when they started making collectibles. I mean, that's, that's the way they marketed it.
Yeah, they make them.
Hey, buy this, it's a collectible. And so to me, that was the downfall because now you're manufacturing collectibles and you're trying to catch on to the trend.
At least you can recycle the beer cans.
Well, these are steel, oh, steel ones. I thought you were stack ratting too. Yeah, yes. And you can touch it if you're still Billy, beer.
Yeah, nothing, nothing nicer than having rooms full of stuff that has no value whatsoever.
He's fifty-one Mustangs, back to back.
That's true, that's true. Beauty is an eye, they be older. Okay. So it's a remarkably liberating message to those who need to be liberated from the, who value being liberated from the system that they live in. And it's also remarkably challenging for those who who are part of that system and benefit from it, which is pretty much what he's said before. But the price is being willing to let go of everything. That's the test. And who can pass it completely? I don't claim to be a person who can, but we try. But it's, it's the test, you know, and that's the truth of that's true for the church as well as it for everything else. You know, as we, as we do these things with YouTube and being in each other's presence virtually, but not actually, what is the future structure of public gatherings? We don't know.
I think it needs to happen because we really need to do face-to-face.
Well, you do, but I have no control over what's going to happen.
The culture, the times, things change.
Things change. And I, I agree with you. I, I value the face-to-face and I think that all of us living in our own little bubble is a problem.
It is, and mentally, it's taking people down, depression and all of that, and it's not good. People are social. They need to interact.
I have a neighbor who, a year ago, was slightly forgetful. He was older than me even, and he was getting forgetful. Today, he's, has full-on dementia, and he's, he doesn't know what's going on. And I just, I feel like COVID.
Well, that, that did take something, but it's forcing us to deal with that reality. And I can fight like heck for the things that, the way I think they should be knowing full well, but I have no voice in it in the future. It's going to be somebody else's world. You know.
It's changing. I mean, people get together and what this COVID thing has brought up is guess what? People pass things from one to another. I mean, it's always happened. It happened before COVID. And, but now, it's, it's kind of like the germ service. Now they want to say, what, what do, some people want to steer toward is you can't get together because you might get a disease. Yeah, where will that end? Yeah, and it doesn't end. Yeah, and it doesn't end.
For those who want to-
If you're so scared of getting something, then isolate yourself from everything.
For those who want to exercise control, it will never end.
Right.
And that's, there is that side to it. I don't care if people think it's scary or not.
There's a term for that, it's called precautionary principle.
You and I know that one well.
Well, let's, any comments, questions, night remarks?
How's Mark doing?
He's doing all right. I think he's at home, and he's dot grinning. He was going to go over to Hawthorne for some therapy, but he didn't want to go there, so he's at home. All right, let's conclude with the Our Father. Our Father?
Lord in heaven, our help is in thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, unnerved as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And we will not leave your invitation, and deliver us from evil. Adore the kingdom, and the power, and the glory, forever and ever. Amen.
All right, let's go in peace and serve the Lord.
Thanks.
Amen, thanks for coming, everybody.